I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open a meeting to the public at this time. Anybody wish to address the board? They do so. There being no one to address the board at this time, I'll close this section. You'll have the chance to attend the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting of November 17th, for you all have copies. If there's any additions or deletions.
I'll make a motion to accept the regular meeting of November 17th, 2008.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills, and our send is not here, so I don't know if there's any deletions or additions.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills as we received them on paper today.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote that you would send a bye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Correspondents. Thank you, ma'am. Report of the mayor and the board of trustees. First thing on the agenda is the annual parade of toys sponsored by the Village of Ross's Point will be held Friday, December 5th, 2008. That's this Friday. And they start at the village park at 6:45. And we sing a few songs on our way over to the Peg upriver gazebo where they'll go caroling. And will be a children's story hour or story session. And we will have hot chocolate cookies. And Madam Burke has got everything under control. Yeah. Okay. Second thing, power outage. Power outage. You'll have something in your folder about a power outage. And that is going to be Wednesday morning at 8:00 a.m. And the streets that are affected are Church Street from Chappas Street to all marketable customers on 276, not all Church Street. Pratt Street from Church Street to Lake Street. And Manor Drive, senior housing. All of Chappas Street from Maple to 18 Prospect Street. All of Delaware Street from Clinton to Pratt Street. And Upper State Street from Delaware to Church. The purpose of this outage is to finish the underground tie-in on Delaware Street. Next thing on my agenda is Thursday, there will be a public hearing in Plattsburgh at Clinton County's Emergency Service Center, 16th Emergency Drive. And it's on the Northern Deer Expressway slash Route 11 corridor study. The final draft is in. I think I have a copy of the coordinates.
I didn't get a copy.
We did get a copy. And it's, I am sorry about that. I thought, everyone else got a copy. I don't know what you did, Kelly.
No, it's okay. I'll give one here to you.
Here. I don't need that. I don't need this. I got a lot of coffee. And I am planning to attend. I don't know if any other board member is. Because it's imperative, if this thing goes through, that we make sure it comes the way we want it to come.
What time is it, George?
Uh, 7:00 a.m.
I don't know yet. I can go at all.
Okay, the last thing on my agenda is I am looking up for surplus the 1993 Ford Tempo and the 1987 GMC dump truck. Our new dump truck came in today. I need a motion on that, Carol. Need a motion for surplus to 2 a.m. Park them out in front of the village hallway for sale. Whatever we get for it, we take. Amen. They're gone.
What's the dump truck worth?
What's that?
No, we're gonna do, we'll do sealed bids for that. We'll put it in paper down.
I know that they put the brand-new Ford, or pickup that O'Neil bought when Bethany got married, but for sale right out there in the lawn. And that's how they sold it. We could put a minimum bid on it.
What's it worth, Ronny? 87?
High value prices.
Couple thousand, maybe?
Well, it should be worth, I believe, a couple thousand.
Well, we could put a minimum price on it. $9.99.
You put a minimum bid, but it's a sealed bid, and then you open it in seven days, and it's sealed. That's what it is.
I guess that's all right.
Well, that's what we've done in the past.
Yeah, well, the Tempo, you know what that's worth. They had a crusher.
Given, you're not serious about parking them in the village office, are you?
Why not?
Well, given the time of year, though, with snow removal, perhaps we could say that they could be seen between 8:00 and 4:00 at the garage. I just think if you, you're gonna have trouble with snowboarders, you know.
I don't wanna get them out there while we're here. I only wanna get them out there a couple weeks.
Well, there's gonna be an out paper about sealed bids. They can, you know.
Okay, I need the motion to put in surplus.
I'll make a motion. Have the 87 dump truck and the Ford Ford?
Tempo.
Tempo, that surplus.
Second. Moved by trustee Burts, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. And I believe that's it for me, except for one other thing, board. On your desk, you have these papers right here. Says, payment of town taxes by village residents. All right. What you see listed there, building inspector, board help, that list right down the scroll, right? And going on to the second page. Our things that we are exempt from paying taxes. On the second page, it says, village residents may be exempt from financing certain other town expenditures at the option of the town board. Right? As repairs, purchase of repairs, custody of highway equipment, Town Highway Budget Number 3. And snow removal, Town Highway Budget Number 4, which in this year's budget, we are being taxed for. They do, the town does absolutely no plowing in the Village of Ross's Point. Village residents, I went up to the town board meeting, went to a budget hearing, and I asked them why we were at 13% increase and the town residents were at 11% increase. And I was told, because we took our sales tax money. Well, our sales tax money does not affect the town budget whatsoever. Has nothing to do with it. It does with the county budget. Secondly, then I was told, well, you're paying for snow removal. And I asked, how come we're paying for snow removal when you don't do anything for us? And they said, well, audit control says we can do it. The comptroller says we can do it. So I came back and those are, I put an argument because I didn't have an answer. So I came back and I dug this up in manual. And this is what I found. So I would like to approach the town, ask them that next year we'd be exempt from those three items that are there. And I think the bottom item, municipal court agreement, so I don't think we have it from there. But that we be exempt from them. Or if not, then we are going up to the town and get salt because we're paying for salt.
Well, I think somebody from the village board ought to go to the meetings. You know, maybe we ought to take terms for that. Every once in a while, somebody from the board would go up there.
The sad part here is that I asked the town board directly. And I might get crucified for this, but not one of them could answer me. They all turned it over to Jay. Said Jay knows the answer.
Did they say they were gonna give back to you with an answer? If they didn't know it then?
No, no. Said, Jay, you know the answer. Tell them. And that's what she told me.
Shouldn't we get charged for it? So I'd like to know how much, you know, how much it adds still. That's another question.
I'll take 13% compared to 11. It's only 2%, right? But 2% on a sense valuation or whatever it is, is quite a piece of change. And I, and I just think that's totally unfair that we can charge for snow removal. That's only my only personal feeling.
Why?
Not when we're doing all the world's work.
We're doing all our own work. That's right. So if there's no objection, I'll try to attend the next town board meeting. I'm not sure if they're gonna do it this month. This is one. Zipper. But if I can, I will, and I, and I will put it to them. The only other alternative we have, and I just may do it if they get stubborn, is to float a petition around this village asking town to remove us. I think it's unfair. End of conversation.
Let me ask you, they say the purchase, repair, and custody of highway equipment, Town Highway Budget. Do they have a, like a town other, right? There's two different, there's the villages?
No, no, two.
There's two?
There's town-wide, which includes the two villages, and town outside.
Outside.
Which includes the town.
But we're town and village, but we don't, we don't, we don't pay for their highway equipment, do we?
According to them, we do. We pay for all repairs of the snowplows. Right? Or we pay for labor of snow removal. It's all part of that budget. We pay for salt. We, well, sand, they have their own pit. But, and we pay for anything attached to it, any repairs to the trucks of snow. And I don't, I don't think we pay for purchase of trucks or motors.
Well, we pay for the repair of.
Repair of snow trucks. Well, like she said, she told me, she said, one of the things you gotta remember is chute for snowplow, double the price so that jack the budget up. So we're buying chutes for snowplows.
I mean, they run those trucks all year round, too, so we're paying for repair all year round.
I haven't checked. You ever try to understand town budget?
I looked at it.
Yeah, well, then you know what I'm talking about.
Well, maybe if you don't mind, I'll go up and try to get a clear explanation if I can. I'll talk to Jay West, or whomever might be up there to give me an explanation. There must be a reason why they can tax us.
They can. Legally, they can. The comptroller, or the audit controller says they can tax us for this. But also, puts that statement in there, village residents may be exempt from financing certain other town expenditures at the option of the town board. The town board can vote to take that out of there. And that's what I'm after.
So what we, I suppose what we'd have to do is we'd have to make sure it's clear, and then get a petition and present it to the town board from the village residents. Maybe we should do a generic letter here for the village residents, get as many signatures as we can, and then petition the town board.
Well, then what we should do is, then if you think that way, then we should float a petition.
Right, so I'm saying.
Let's get the figure.
I'd like to get the clarification.
Let's get all the figures so we know first.
So we know exactly what we're doing, and make sure that they're clear.
Could we start with a letter from this board making the request?
Yep.
And then if we don't get any satisfaction from that, give them a chance to make it right. And if they don't, then work on the residents.
And they'll be a little sharper with their pencils next year on the budget.
Is this, George, something that has been ongoing?
Yes, ma'am. And I will talk to you later about it. Because I don't wanna mention certain things that happened. For obvious reasons, you know, I don't wanna tell you.
Well, I think John should go up if he wishes. And I think this board should send a letter to the town making that request. That is...
You know, I mean, Francis and I are still in that shared services, and I know we haven't gotten off the ground, and we're having our study now. You know, we certainly don't wanna put up roadblocks when, if in fact, in the future, you know, we wanna be helping each other out with that.
Well, if it was reversed, do you think they would check on us? They would probably say something to us if we were doing it to them, so.
Well, I mean, it's just, so we're gonna have a fair understanding of why they're doing it.
I don't think it hurts to make the request at all. No, I think you're right.
I don't have a problem making the request.
Fair is fair.
But after you hear what I have to say, John, privately, between you and I, you'll probably have a better understanding. I just don't wanna say something on camera that.
That you'll regret later.
All right, that's it for me.
So are we going to send a letter?
Yes. Trustee Jefferson.
I don't have anything on my agenda, but I just wanna comment that the holiday parade, or the holiday train that came into Ross's Point the other day was beautiful. There was hundreds of people there. It was good for the village, and I'm glad they did it, and thank you for donating to the food bank because it's gonna be a cold winter, and it's gonna be a lot of people who can use the food. So, thank you from the village.
That was a huge success, by the way. I talked to Father Lewis. He said the amount of food that was donated was awesome.
Thanks to the fire department, too. They always do a good job.
As they always do. Right, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind getting the angles of the day? No, I think you just broke it down. Trustee Penfield.
Yeah, actually, I have nothing written on the agenda, but we have two things that gave to light today. Trustee Burts and I met with Melissa regarding a couple of issues which we'll talk about in just a minute. And she also had mentioned to me that we had talked the last meeting about that marketing and promotion committee. She has heard back from three additional people that she had originally, or we had originally on our list, who are willing to serve. And they are Maureen Rouse from Lakeside Coffee, Dan Bozley from Quarterstone, and Richard Sluska, who is a property owner, was several properties in the downtown. And the three of them expressed interest in being on the committee. So I would like to make a motion tonight that we appoint those three individuals to serve on the marketing and promotion committee now that they've had a chance to respond to their invitation.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? Is this gonna be the same committee as we're working on the party here?
I don't know the committee. I don't need it.
We haven't put the committee yet. I only got one person. Melissa said she was gonna give us some others that she knew that was interested. This is the Veterans Park.
No, I think this is the, this is the one that Brian was describing for the last meeting he attended for marketing and promoting the village, having to do with different activities, website, and so on, so.
I have the motion made. Second. So I had a discussion. If not, all those in favor, both I use the sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and then, as they said, trustee Burts and I met this afternoon with Melissa regarding a couple of issues. One of them was a timeline having to do with the rest of the 2005 EPF grant. We have about 13 months to complete the work, primarily having to do with code review process. So we worked out, I think, pretty ambitious, but fairly decent timeline to get everything accomplished so that we can have it in a local law format for adoption prior to November 1st of 2009. So we made a few changes to the agenda, but we'll be getting the committee hopefully together again sometime in January. And we'll get that on its way when we finish.
I got a letter today from Taker Yer, sending that from December of 2009.
Yes, yeah. And then we also had a lengthy discussion about issuing occupancy permits to new businesses, primarily on Champlain Street and Lake Street. And this is an issue, I guess, that came out of the training two weeks ago that some of the members of the zoning and planning board intended in Plattsburgh. And one of the things that we found is that if, if we have existing office space or business space that can be occupied without having to have a specially used permit or a variance, we can actually streamline the process a little bit so that instead of requiring an applicant to go through two months' work of planning board meetings, they can go through one month's work, which will help them to get into their business space and get up and running more smoothly. She put together a letter that kind of explains this, and I don't know whether, I know, I guess John has a copy. But she'd like the village board to consider making a policy decision that, in consultation with Tom Renee, that would change either the title or the procedure for people who have an approved use and just wanna go into office space either on Lake Street or Champlain Street. And she has been in contact with Tom Renee, but had not yet heard back from him. So when we hear back from him, hopefully by the next meeting, we can come up with what his recommendation is just to make this process a little bit more streamlined, and also give the planning board the support that they need to be able to review an application in one month's meeting rather than having to send the application to the county. Apparently, Ross's Point is just about the only municipality in the county that does this. It is not required. All we need to do is either change the title or modify the procedure. So she's looking for input from Tom Renee on that. And having dealt with a number of the new businesses in town, this would specifically be for just an occupancy review for someone going into an existing space, not renovating significantly, not building a new building, but it would just be a review for those particular individuals. So it's something for us to consider for the next meeting. And she asked that we pass along the letter and that information to you tonight.
Have you seen the letter?
Yes. Don't let that meeting go the way he talked about it. It's in our, in our book saying it's allowed use. You don't need anything for it. It's not allowed use.
They can move it in.
It still has to go through the planning board review, though. It does. Any, any non-single family is what is in our code.
Well, that's in the code here, but the guy down the county said, dude, that just makes the paper.
Well, the county is, yes. The county, they.
But us, but us even having to fill out the paperwork, it's allowed use.
But, but in our code, what is required is for any occupancy other than a non-single family. So.
Well, maybe we need to change the code.
No, I think it's important that we go through, because John and I had a lengthy discussion about this. If you take, take, for example, not to obstruct the process that someone is trying to make or the progress that they're trying to make in opening a business. But if there are any issues that could potentially involve the fire department, any particular, I don't know, a place could have chemicals, they could be doing some sort of processing, that it would be important for, the fire department is an example, the police department is another, perhaps just to have knowledge of what's in the building. Not to prevent people from doing what they wanna do, but so that we have an idea of what to expect should something occur. And that has been the process right along, which I personally believe is very valuable. But it's, it certainly is something that I know when it was brought to Melissa's attention, I think, by Tim Lincor, it was something that had come out of the training, that he had spoken to someone at the training that it's the county review really that is holding people off.
Why do we have to do county review?
Because we don't. We don't, that's what they're saying.
You know, we just sent a whole bunch of paperwork down to the county for this darn cell cover.
We didn't have to.
Yes, we require a variance. That has, there are certain things that have to go to the county.
Yeah, but we shouldn't. The bad thing about that was, in the code, and I've asked my name to change it, the village can exempt themselves from all that. And he's gotta change it.
Well, but.
I understand if they're now.
Every time you change a code, though, it costs more.
Look what it's costing us right now. Greed.
But just keep that in mind. Every time the lawyer looks at it, they use it.
Okay, why don't you talk about that? JNS. The young lady from JNS, Howard, will be here Friday to look at site. And Renee's got the contracts. He said everything is in order. He's added one paragraph. Oh, contract, beside the contract, ending the outcome of the zoning board. Tom called me on that, so.
Well, anyway, so once we heard back from Tom Renee and we straightened out what the best way to do this is, I would imagine that the next meeting, if you had a chance to read this over, so we could take some action just to make sure that it is a little more business friendly, so.
We, a lot of practice is not driving the law.
Well, that's right.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think we still have an obligation to do it in the right way, and I think that that's important, so. One of the things that comes to mind is the business that was potentially going to open on Champlain Street in the Mountain Mark Plaza over the late spring. Had there not been a planning board review, one could imagine that that business would have opened. So very, very clear is a perfect example, I think, of why it's necessary. So, anyway, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, trustee Penfield. Trustee Burts.
You all have copies of the memorandum. I understand with the Champlain Fire District. They have a.
NEMS.
NEMS. And without going through the whole thing, basically says that our fire department will cover at no expense to the town the areas, area between Village of Ross's Point boundary lines to the U.S.-Canadian border on the north side. South side is the Village of Ross's Point boundary line. On the west is the main line track of the CP-DNA railroad. And east, the natural boundary between New York and Vermont, Lake Champlain, including the bridge. Somebody know what we're talking about is the street I'm in right up there. Is everybody in agreement with both of these resolutions?
Absolutely.
From the fire district and EMS? And if you are, I do have a resolution that Carol was so kind to type up for us that we might be able to sign. Do you have an original, Carol? At the office? Do you have all the papers?
No.
You want me to read it all, or do?
Just read one, or part of one, whatever.
The resolution for fire coverage between the Village of Ross's Point Fire Department and the Champlain Fire District, whereas a memorandum of understanding has been drafted to provide coverage for a section of area within the town of Champlain that is mostly accessible via the Village of Ross's Point, also within the town of Champlain, currently covered by the Champlain Fire District. Whereas the Village of Ross's Point has asked the Champlain Fire District to have the Village of Ross's Point Fire Department cover this area. Whereas the MOU, or the memorandum of understanding, is between the parties for fire, for control of fire, hazardous material control, and any other emergency support in the event of a major disaster or other emergency. And whereas the coverage of area includes all lands that, north, the Village of Ross's Point boundary line and previously annexed areas within the Village of Ross's Point. Coverage area boundary lines include, north, as I had said. And whereas there will be no charge from the Village of Ross's Point to cover this area, now therefore be resolved that the Village of Ross's Point approves the MOU between the Village of Ross's Point Fire Department and the Champlain Fire District, and I may also add the Champlain EMS, that this resolution shall take effect immediately. The pushing of the order going was duly put to a roll call vote, which resulted as the following.
Put it in form of motion.
Put that in form of a motion.
Second. Can I do both of them, or one?
Yeah, we're gonna do both.
Moved by trustee Burts, seconded by trustee Jefferson. They're both identical.
One is for the.
One for EMS, one for fire. Both are identical other than EMS. Seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion?
I'm wondering, the one for EMS, John, the first paragraph, the end of the, the end, the last, last part of that paragraph, currently covered, should that say by the, by Champlain EMS?
I'll change it.
Instead of Champlain Fire District?
Oh, I see the first paragraph.
I'll change that.
Very good.
My other question is, once we cast these resolutions, what, what is happening with the town? In other words, does the town of Champlain then have to do their own resolution to excuse the coverage? No?
No, they're in the district, no.
The fire district.
Right, but they contracted with the fire district and with Champlain EMS to cover a certain area. Yes, they have. The town of Champlain has.
No contract.
Champlain Fire District is a separate.
Champlain Fire District is a separate body and tenancy, and they took in the Champlain, town of Champlain, and the village of Champlain.
I understand that.
But the town does not contract. They don't give them any money, only EMS.
So they are no longer collecting the taxes for the Champlain Fire District?
Yes, all they can do is collect it.
And then they turn the money over.
Turn the money over.
So then, does the Champlain Fire District and Champlain EMS, do they have to do their own individual resolutions?
They've already done them. They've already passed them. And I think it's very important to, the reason we're doing this is for public safety. Response time for fires and ambulances are, it's just, you know, it's just the right thing to do.
Any other discussion?
So once we pass this resolution, when does this take effect?
Well, it says immediately, but I take that with the fire control at Michael.
It'll, it'll take a couple weeks.
It'll, it'll take a couple weeks. We'll have to, Chris Roundly and I will work with the dispatch center to get the, the things changed in the, the 911 system. And we were tentatively slating the January 1st, just to make it an easy turnover date.
So, even though I was the voice, I'd just like to say that it was, basically, it was Michael Blaine, Chris Roundly that actually put this together before the, the district and the both districts, EMS and fire. And they did all the work to make sure. It was well received by everyone, and I think it was a commonsensical thing to do for everybody. Everybody very pleased to do it. Thank you, Michael Blaine.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call a walk. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Berts.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And Labor.
And the only other thing I have is just to request an executive session to discuss water plant personnel.
Second. Moved by Trustee Berts, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Roll call a walk. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Berts.
Aye.